Would you join me for the? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to request? And?
I think we need to, I'm sorry, is the minutes on it or no? Is that minutes must be?
Uh, no, no.
Okay, good. Never mind, we don't have to change it.
Okay. So, uh, we're ready for public comments, our first section of public comments.
All right, so we have two, um, audiences tonight, both in person and remote, so I'm gonna go over the rules real quick. Um, everybody, um, whether remote or in person, so just see our public comments policy on the screen. Make sure you are familiar with that before making any sort of public comment. Um, if you're in person, just obviously raise your hand. I can, uh, bring you over a wireless microphone. First name, last name, town of residence, um. You will not be able to hear yourself in the room amplified, it's just for picking up on Zoom. And then, um, if you are remote, you can use the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen and that will allow you to, um, be noticed and then we can, um, allow you to make a public comment and in that case also first name, last name and town of residence. Dustin?
Allison Mar, Bringe resident, and I'm actually here tonight speaking on behalf of J R E A. So you had your policy that you first read through last week, I think it's G B E V V. That might be the sample coding, but the student and employee relations. And I would say not right away, but over the course of the week toward the end of the week, maybe when people came in the building. We had a few people reach out to us. And again, I would say first off, everyone is very much in support of obviously protecting our students' physical and emotional safety. That's not in question, but there was some language for particular ones that people were just a little bit anxious about wanting some more clarity on that. And I think, for example, like we mentioned, we live in a very small community, there's lots of connections in and out of school. Like when you say fraternizing with students, does that mean like if you're at a graduation party for a family friend and they have students that might be attending that like? We just wanted a little bit of clarity about what does that mean for us? And we would love to have the opportunity to give some more specific feedback before you officially vote. I think tonight you're just doing a second reading, but we just want to be proactive and reach out. Again, we're one hundred percent behind the policy, just wanna make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that we're also not limiting, we wanna build that whole looking at students as whole people. And we wanna make sure that, you know, if we run into a student at Dunkin' Donuts, we're not concerned about like, should I be talking to them or not? It would just be nice to have a little bit of that grayness taken away if possible.
Thank you, Alice. So was there a locked up copy or something that we can look at or?
We didn't do anything like that officially, but we'd be more than happy to have it, I'll give.
No. Lisa?
Um, I guess what I'd like to do is, uh, I'm after, if you could stay just a little bit after public comments, what I'd love to do is ask for an adjustment to the agenda and look at this policy together and then Juneau can put it on the screen and we can talk about some specific things. Is that cool?
All right, I'm not seeing any other public comments at this time. Um, just let everybody know, we do have a second public comment session at the end of the meeting as well.
Okay, thanks, Juneau. So then?
Can I make a motion that we, uh, edit the agenda to bring item number seven or eight? Policy discussing discussion of policies to prior to the?
Bring it forward, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, is everybody in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Not so aye. So move that item up on the agenda and, uh, we'll see if we can get Juneau to bring it up there on the screen for us and it's specifically G B E V B.
So this area here?
Yeah, so number three is the one I think I've received the most from that. Not being too sure. I gave them a way of example, I've done another elementary teacher mention as well, like having a student come to like write letters to you in the summer, like, hey, can I tell you about what I'm doing? And then we were like, ooh, this policy, like what would that mean for us?
I'd almost wanna have the ah, the, um, DOE ethics went up as well, like I'd almost want like what is the DOE standard of ethics? For communicating via email, communicating, like that's, that's our standard.
Yeah.
I feel like that may also be vague, so if that's the case, if it really does have to be that way, then we just wanted to make sure we were getting some clarity on that, but that might be a great thing to look at.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, especially the written piece, um, this school email using, you know, like what is the, what is the intent, what is the, yeah? What are the consequences, what is the background? This is to say, I'm coming over Saturday, tell your uncle to put on the Barbie, you know, that's different from, you know, trying to circumvent the systems that we have in place for the safety of all. To, you know, the, the intent is to protect everybody, not just one body. And so, you know, I think, I think a lot of this has to be big, a lot of it had, I mean, we can't do, you know, specifically you can't, yeah, but, um, but no, I think, I think to say, yeah, cause we are, there's so much interrelation and I, I, I think it has to be reasonable.
Okay.
You know, I, do you have any, uh, do you have any better language, any suggestions?
I, uh, that's the thing, I honestly don't, Charlie mentioned that and I don't have anything to offer you in terms of more specifics. I mean, other than, I don't know, like I'm, I'm sure it's not for in terms of clarity for a school board policy, you probably don't wanna be listing examples of things not to do.
I think it's all based on the, uh, standard of ethics from the DOE, um, and really that, um, that does give a good, you know, here is our expectations of every staff member, um, and how they treat each other and the admin and students and all that. So I think if, if anybody's questioning that, they should probably go back to that document and read that really carefully. And I hope, I really hope staff are, you know, like that, that is valuable. You know, that's, that does have a good, really good reminders of, oh yeah, that is seems like common sense, but when you're in the, in the weeds, you don't always think about it. Um, so I'm sorry, I can't, I, yeah, I don't, unless somebody has a specific language thing, I can't, you know, I.
Do you, so where would one find this standard of ethics, so if you wanted to look at them?
Ruben, can you answer that? There's a numerous like, like the duty hazard, but every staff member gets it, it's in our, on our website, there's a link to it. I believe, you know, in the main documents, but you would probably have it faster.
If we Googled stand code of conduct, New Hampshire code of conduct and ethics, it's all the same document. It starts off with the first half is the ethics, the second half is a code of conduct. Ethics are, um, less stringent than, or I say less weighty than the code of conduct is.
And this manual, I was gonna say, the staff manual has it for front and center, I believe.
Yeah, staff manuals still being adjusted, but yeah, the content wise it will all be the same. Just people's names all have to be shifted around some more still. So if we, um, I think an example, if we were to go to the code of conduct, so down more. Um, we may have gone too far, let's say. There should be a break, but yeah, I think we went too far. Right, oh, there we go. Code of Conduct, okay, so just go there. All right. Keep on moving, cause it, uh, it will be, this is just, this is why we have it, these are the definitions. Keep on, yep. Okay, principle one, so responsibility to the education profession and educational professionals, so, um, we talk about discrimination, falsifying fraudulent, you know, un-inappropriate behavior, lots of that, so that's not what we're talking about here, so keep on going to the next one. Um, da, 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 yep. Responsibility to students. Um, so unprofessional conduct shall include but not be limited to discrimination against the students. Um, failure to provide appropriate supervision of students pursuant to local school district policy adopted, et cetera. Furnishing alcohol or illegal drugs, committing any of the following acts to any minor or any student or prior to abuse, cruelty, any sexual harassment. Um, soliciting or encouraging participation in romantic or relationships, listing a student or a former student, so that's all about, um, that piece. We have responsibility to the school community, um, again, discrimination isn't, isn't all of these. Um, not accepting gifts from kids, giving gifts away to kids and so forth. Um, if we go to the next one, I think the next one has the technology one.
And I'd like that, hang on, can you go back for one second, uh, go back to that page one second, um, that accepting gifts, cause if anybody's listening to this, they might say, what, the, the Christmas? Um, th- this is very specific to gifts or favors for personal use or gain, where there might be an actual appearance of conflict. I mean, that it's much more specific, so Christmas is okay.
And, yep, and so the next one would probably fit with some of our conversations, so engaging in, um, electronic media with a student or former student up to ten months after the student's graduation, departure and so forth. Engaging in inappropriate communication with students or former students. Um, so inappropriate communication with students over, um, social media, I mean, most communication, if it's written in a written form, is gonna be via text or email, um, or some other platform. Um, timing, so when we look at this, when is it happening, how often is it happening, what's the subject matter of that, the amount of communication and so forth, so. That I think is what we're talking about largely when you talk about fraternizing or doing any of that same behavior, but in person.
So we could say, like, if, if members come to me, I could say, so hey, we had this conversation and it may be vague in the policy, cause it can't outline everything in this policy, but if you check the code of conduct, if you recognize that you're not doing anything against that, then you're good.
And actually, I, this particular section's really good and we could add that to the policy and saying, um, where, where we're writing about fraternizing stuff, using a per code of ethics, New Hampshire code of ethics, this section for more, yeah, we could allude to this particular section.
This is not fraternizing. I mean, maybe that is just the wrong word in the policy, because we're basically saying fraternizing is okay. If you're at a baseball game and some students come up to you, that's okay. This is not fraternizing, this is clearly different behavior.
I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure if fraternizing is a vague word, it's, it is a vague term. Um, so I'm not sure for deeper, so do we wanna change the word to something that says inappropriate or?
I was just looking in a different part of the code of ethics here, um, for something that's maybe applicable and it says interacts with, with students within appropriate settings, right? So I think that word appropriate or inappropriate is important, right?
All right.
Um, and it seems to be consistent with what they're using here in the code of contact, I think saying, I could understand if you were to like, look at a strict interpretation of that, if I were a teacher or I were an employee somewhere and it says, you know, shall not fraternize, well, what am I supposed to do, run the other way? I mean, obviously, I don't think that's, I think we can all look at each other and say, that's not our intent, right? We all understand that it's something different than that, but if you were to interpret that by a, you know, strict, in a strict manner, it could be interpreted that way. So I think incorporating something around like appropriate setting or?
Yeah. Which, which again is vague, but kinda defines like you can't fraternize in an appropriate way, in an appropriate setting versus
inappropriate, I think which is defined here.
As defined, but as added and says noted in the code of ethics.
Mm-hmm.
Both of them I think is important.
Yeah.
I like it.
So we'd be taking the word fraternizing out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And so it'll be appropriate or inappropriate, that's usually, I mean, the the definition of that is usually just what would a reasonable person believe would be appropriate, so if, um, for instance, in this case, when you're talking about, all right, am I, if I'm a, uh, I'm an assistant principal and I have a learner that I've emailed um, their personal email address, you know, or, or school email address and I do that like, you know, nine times a week, like that's, that's a lot, like, you know, for whatever reason, you know, even if the school related, so what's like, that would be a, uh, inappropriate, that's not reasonable to take place.
If you go to the bottom page three on this. Um. Yeah, so.
Unless you're talking about?
Up to the bottom of page three, it has some, which I was talking about, that maybe we could. Yeah, page three, so you're on page ten now.
Oh, page three.
Yeah, 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 sorry, not section three.
Yeah, it's the code of ethics side of things.
Yeah, there it is.
Which seems with the proper way.
I mean, the other, the other piece is that if the policy could switch it into the positive and say, you know, we're communicating with students in clear and respectful and culturally sensitive manners.
Mm-hmm, make the language positive.
Make, make it more positive, you know. And interacts with students within appropriate settings, that makes various, I mean, settings is digital or um, and then of course, and we can, and we can put that code of conduct piece about it in there being in its, uh, you know, frequency, time, content. So those two areas seem like it could be a little.
Around gifts and things like that, right, cause it's like.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you, that was really helpful, I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Yeah, I'm so, we're so glad people are listening, sorry.
Our ratings aren't real high.
Problem is, I don't see the word comments, someone.
All right. Then I, what I'd like to do is, um, remove the policy discussion until our next school board meeting, so I have time to edit the text and we actually have a policy meeting in between that, where we can just look at it together and see if there's any.
That's on the seventh, right?
To change like this, so, yeah, so I'd like to remove both, uh, both policies from the discussion and add them to the next agenda, please.
And yes, Ruben, I do believe it's on the seventh at four thirty, see it, yes.
Do we have to remove it or can we just not act on it?
Or postpone it or not act or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do a third reading.
Third reading.
Yeah. Okay. It's the board, I mean, of course, you know, if people like it the way it is, the board can also approve it tonight if they want.
Mm-hmm.
If someone makes a motion in the second and so forth.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, add this to the agenda for a third meeting and not make anything.
As well as the other one.
As well as the other one, let's, we don't need to, yeah.
Okay, second, thank you, Christine.
You have to get a quick report of this. Actually, if you may, uh, just make a comment, I'm obviously not the code of ethics for that. Um, but I changed this sort of relation.
Can I ask a microphone and you're, yeah?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
The Nathan Flowers from New Hampshire, um, so it's, I was actually wasn't even here to actually talk on this, but it's pulled up, I was asked questions. If you go back to, um, the stimulation stuff, maybe this person actually seeing it, nice to have a couple of questions, is it a new document or is this just a, or are there red lines to it? Are there changes to it?
Sure, so the, um, this particular policy that we're working on now, if you go to the, um, to the, uh, district website, under school board tab, there's school policies and those run everything and they're all alphabetical. The policy committee meets, um, every month to update them, renew them, make sure that they're aligning with New Hampshire School Board. This particular policy hadn't been touched since two thousand and five. And so we really want to get our hands on, especially one that has such relevant information in it, so. Um, this is one that the School Board Association, this is the language that they, um, worked on through their lawyers. And we like the language, it's just there are, there was one other piece that we also edited out, um, just like, yeah, I don't, I don't think we want this piece. So this is good, that we fine tune it constantly and then we'll come back another year and fine tune it and stuff, so.
You say the highlighted parts are the red.
Uh, these highlighted parts are simply notes from the School Board Association, you mean these yellows here?
Well, just any of them, I think there's.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Juneau, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, the policy that we have existing on the books right now is actually J I C D A A. That's the one that, um, Lisa was referring to that hasn't been touched since two thousand and five. As you can see, it's just a sentence, um, so this isn't, um, this one that we're pushing forward isn't redlined or anything, this is just the board, this is the School Board Association saying they've done their own redlining to show their process and how it's been approved and changed. So if you go to the bottom, it shows like what the, the relevant change was, the history of change. Um, but the board would be not touching any of this part, it's just, that's just their general language that they put at the top. It would actually be starting here and it would go down to the end of this, so this is just the format that the School Board Association uses for their template. Um, just to, again, make sure that people are accountable and understanding of like how things are changing on their end, so.
And then you said you made one little change, what was that?
Is this the one that we took counsel out or was that last week's?
Apologize for my.
No, you're good, keep going down for a second. We're glad you're here, yes, you see number ten? We changed that. Uh, in the policy committee, we had a discussion about this word, this, the intention of this particular sentence, and we always look for the intention, um, is more medical, like you, you think it more clinical for this sentence. And using the word counsel, I know it has a clinical connotation, but when we think of the word counsel, like fraternize, counsel is advice. And teachers advise, staff advise, they, they, the kids have to turn to adults to be, you know, we wanna make sure the kids know that they are safe adults who can, who can say, you know, wow, I, you sure that's a good idea or, you know, or what do you think if I do this, if I color my hair this way? You know, counsel was too vague and it encompasses a lot of what teachers actually do, we don't want to add that into a clinical thing, we don't want them assessing, diagnosing, treating. But we wanted to take the word counsel out, cause it didn't fit.
Um, I can see how, because it can both mean consoling on one end and on the other end, it could be giving um, advice in the sense of something that could be very personal, in a sense like
opinionated, I should say, better word, um.
Yeah.
Since it's a, the shall not, I guess I don't have the issue, I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, if we look at ten, can we go and see the second part of ten, cause I think that helps?
Mm-hmm.
If I, if I recall. So, um, so shall not, and then we go to treat a student's personal problems relating to any behavior, abuse, mental or physical health or family relationships, so.
Oh yeah, that's a bigger.
We're not, we're not treating, we're not.
Unfortunate step there, yeah, the next page, yeah.
But instead should refer um, the student to the appropriate individual or agency for assistance, so.
Okay, cause like when I originally read it, I, I read it as it's the, the staff members are not, as, as it was originally written, are not the ones giving the advice towards it. And then it goes into, so giving, so, we, I'm gonna just read out, I'm a quality engineer, so I have to read things. Many times in acid, I ask a lot of dumb questions, and they seem dumb, but it's for my own understanding. Staff members shall not attempt to assess, diagnose or treat a student's personal problem relating to sexual behavior. Some substance abuse, mental or physical health and or family relations, but instead should refer to this, um, student to the appropriate individual or agency for assistance. So I get why you want it with one, the way you explained it, wanna remove the counsel, because you do wanna console them. But what about the portion of giving opinionated advice that could be not appropriate? Cause that's where the counsel, counsel would fit in there, but again, since it's a very vague one, it does take out things that could be very good for the students. But then I can see situations where, what I guess, assess maybe is probably where it fits in, would you agree that?
It really does, it really does, I mean, I.
Assess and treat.
Right, we really.
That type of counseling that you're talking about is really true.
Assess, diagnose, you know, that's, that's, again, there's your opinionated, that's diagnosing, you know, that's, yeah, so we, we have to make sure the teachers are, you know, they know who they can send the kids to and that those people are safe, but also, and there's so many people we have available.
Yeah.
Um, in different roles and that, you know, that it's not on, and that can be really overwhelming for a staff person, you know, and you know this as a teacher, like you feel isolated, you feel like, you know, so hopefully getting the language in here and, and getting out there and say, no, this, that isn't your role. Take that off, there's, yeah.
So I do agree that the assess and treat would, or to diagnose or treat would take the bad portion of that and you keep the consoling portion that is appropriate, so I, I do agree with that.
Yeah.
And just go on to what, um, you said about it, if you'd make a, again, as a quality engineer, if you, the code of ethics is just a, anyone can Google that, right?
Yes.
So if you just make a quick reference, I think that would be appropriate, just add a quick reference to these certain sections, like you said, it would be perfect.
Every teacher, every, every staff member is supposed to, I believe, sign off on the code of ethics, that's, that's a given, so it's just, we have a lot of paperwork, so again, every policy that we can update, bring it forward, say this language needs to be updated and look, we're going back to this basic tenet, you know, so.
Okay, and the change from that one sentence to that, great, so that's all.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you guys, so much.
Where do we stand, do we, we have a commission to move this to next board meeting?
Yeah, and Christine seconded.
And Christine seconded. Do we vote on that? I don't think we did, did we?
No.
Okay, so, all those in favor of moving this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, huh, so that's six zero. Approved. Okay, so thank you for bringing that forward and for.
Tremendous.
Yeah. Okay, and now we're on to the superintendent's report. And hopefully we'll have a student representative coming forward in the next few weeks, yes.
Well, we start Wednesday. Wednesday, like it's, they're coming back, wow.
It's Monday, don't you?
I know, so I'm just saying, it's kind of exciting. So we've had some really great days, actually, um, professional development wise, um, connecting wise, uh, getting a lot of work done, I mean, as you are aware, this summer has been a summer of projects and so the projects are continuing to go on, if you were to walk upstairs, um, prior to this event, we walked to um, a part of a building that was downstairs, cause I wanted you to see something be a little more complete, there's still some work a little bit being done upstairs. It will be done, um, and it's, uh, getting to be a whole lot better than what it has been, and I talked to Leland and I know that Sandy has been, um, managing the work in all the locations very, very well. Um, I think, uh, things are, are coming along well. Uh, some of the floors, you know, may not be waxed as we would typically like to because of the work that's being done with the HVAC projects. But the HVAC projects and the air quality is the most important thing anyway, so we're very pleased with the work so far and that's been done. Uh, we have had a lot of new take place, so we've talked throughout the summer of some new work, both from a physical plant and from a philosophical approach over at the Jaffrey Grade School with schedules, with um, teaming and, and things of that nature, but also just the building itself, if you were to go over there and look at it now compared to what it was like um, last, at the end of last year, um, new flooring, um, you have the mascots, you have, uh, the owl in the gym, in the middle of the gym floor now, which has never been there and has been redone. Uh, the walls have been painted, uh, lockers have been removed from the lower grades, the nice lockers that match everything have been moved up for the fourth and fifth grade, it looks really slick. And, um, beautiful new cubbies with hooks and so forth are in the hallways, uh, it will be really fun for people to stop by and go over there, it's just a really nice transformation. Don't go to the cafeteria right now, um, wait till, wait till Wednesday, um, that will be good. Uh, there's, we, we've been taking the opportunity to purge a lot of things and so, uh, which is great, so the rooms, uh, you know, are a little more open and. Are a little more open and uh there's not as much clutter uh as maybe there had been in the past from just keeping a lot of. You know, uh, items. And so it's been, it's been very good. It's been a nice. It's been a nice shift, a very time consuming um shift, but uh it's, it's been good. RMS, ready to go, beautiful, like. Everything's set. There's been some nice painting there. I walked around with the principal the other day. Um, you know, really making sure that, yes, they have the white that is going around. Um, Sandy's really leading this kind of universal. Um, practice around all the schools when the painting happens and uh but they also had the red. To match up with their uh logos and their colors there as well. Whereas JGS, you'll see a lot more blue in theirs. Here, you can, you walk in and you see the difference with the flooring that is there. So with um all of the branding that. Um, the schools have done and also Juno's been a big piece of that branding, making sure that that's been going. Um, not only, you know, through the collaborative process of, of deciding what those. Emblems and those uh mascots were gonna be, but also to make sure that everything is gonna function well with, through our communication plan as well. And uh it's been, it's been great. Um, a lot of excitement around mascots. Pretty, pretty neat, actually. We uh had it, what I would consider our opening day session. We did things a little bit differently this year. I typically address the entire district at one time. Uh, it worked out that by splitting it up in a couple. Um, settings or such sessions, I guess you could say, one in the morning here and one over at Ranger Memorial School for all the elementary in the second half of the day. That we were able to gain uh an extra half a day of professional development or school-based time. It was really important to do that this year because um the, certainly the administrative team at the elementary schools has really shifted. Um, and they have indeed, the four of them have come together as a team. And are, uh, have a little bit of a, of a mimicking role as to what happens. And as we've seen work here at the middle school, high school with um. Teaching and learning and with safety and so forth. I, I mean, I've got emails right now coming through on all those. Um, areas of curriculum and about safety and doors and all that. It's just, you know, there's a lot more attention when people are focusing on a little more narrowly. So, and the two principals, all, you know, there's, there's a lot more togetherness right now. And we wanted to make sure that was the time. As much time as we could, and it's not enough time, as much time as we could was given to the schools in order to really set the year up and set the um. Stage for success. Uh, certainly we are uh continuing with our strategic design, which is our foundation. But then our, our long-term planning, which is, uh, I think we're in our third year now of MTSSV implementation throughout the district. Um, and that's going very well. We are also working uh on uh. Curriculum initiatives at the secondary level as well as the elementary level at the end, toward the second half of the year. And the elementary was really working on. Uh, researching the science of reading. Some of that work actually started the year prior with some of our district-wide curriculum work. There was a committee that worked on reading and looking at the science of reading. That is the direction that the entire state of Massachusetts has gone. Um, I think, you know, several other states and, and New Hampshire has grabbed on to it as well. And so uh in order to do that properly, in order to meet with the state, the current state law that has just been uh put into place. About making sure that we are assessing learners up through grade three for reading and dyslexia and so forth. We've gone and purchased Amis Web, which is uh a tool that will be able to utilize, collect the right type of data. It will assess in the right areas. Um, something that N W A, which is, you, you've heard a lot about for years. Does not, uh, in the MTSS multi-tiered systems of support world. N W A actually is not a universal screener and it does not have progress monitoring tools or anything of that nature, whereas Amis Web is that. Uh, we had already removed N W A from the secondary level so that they would focus on their um New Hampshire State Assessment. Um, modular assessments as opposed to taking all the time and doing N W A, which hasn't really been a, a productive tool for us. Uh, this will be the last year of N W A probably for, there needs to be a discussion, but um we can't. We just don't wanna test kids all the time. So we want to make sure that when we do something, we do it. Get the best data that we have, that best information, be able to utilize that. So we're excited about that. Um, costs a little bit more for us this year because we had already paid for the N W A for the elementary, but we had a, we had about half of our budget saved. Because we did not pay for the middle school, high school versions of that. So, uh, other things that are going on today, my message to both groups was, you know. Let's continue and continue in a collaborative fashion. Uh, the, there's more and more coming out right now in the literature. And when I say the literature, I'm talking about both research as well as the professional writings. That are out there through the, the leaders in education such as Michael Fulham through leadership. Um. Uh, you know, there's some, most, mostly books that are not education in nature, but more like, uh, you know, business in nature are talking about. How organizations have to be structured in order to really meet the demands of the twenty-first century. How we um mobilize our staff and our individuals to make sure that we are doing that. And so collaboration and creation and communication and community building. All those things that we've been focusing on for the last five years or so that we've made even more specific and, and uh the last two to three years. Those are, that's, that's entirely, it's a hundred percent what the lea- the literature is saying to do. And we are doing it and we're moving forward, which is great. Um, we're becoming more agile as an organization. We're able to make adjustments when we can make adjustments when we need to. And um we believe that leadership, uh, this was a statement to um, uh, that has certainly been. Uh, written several times in different places, but leadership is uh not a position. It's a choice. And so we all can be leaders in our, in our own ways, whether we're gonna be in a classroom, whether it be on committees, whether it be within our communities, whether it be. Uh, to just take a risk and try a new initiative to see if something's gonna work better and fail at it. That's leadership. That's okay. And so, um, that was our conversation for today. Lots of things going on. We, we know that we, I, we've had a little bit of a tour of the new childcare center that we're, that we're gonna be talking about tonight a little bit. Um, have a handbook made and that we're calling the Conan, the little, the little Oriole. The Little Oriole Center. So, uh, where we have um several individuals, uh, children of our staff are gonna be. At that center. We're excited to be able to offer that. And that is also gonna provide educational opportunities to our high school learners who are of age. And appropriate to be able to uh do extended learning opportunities or other credit-bearing activities within that, that area of the building. Any questions that you might have? Comments, anything, there's, there's so much.
I appreciate, I did appreciate the invite to the kickoff sessions. I wasn't able to attend today, but I'm interested. Was there any, you know, feedback from. Teachers and staff that, that was particularly notable, either positive or negative, or was it kind of more of just a listening session?
Sure, uh, well, today, I mean, I haven't had any negative feedback, um, which is, doesn't mean that there isn't any. Um, the uh positive feedback that I've had from a couple of different locations has been uh that. Uh, individuals have gone to professional development at other locations. They've talked with people from around the state, from other states as well. And people, you know, teachers talk about. Whether it be their administration or whether it be what's happening and within their schools, their curriculums, anything of that nature. There are a lot, I mean, the, the media, the news out there is not lying, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough profession to be in right now. And there's a lot of. Um, there's a lot of up and down and certainly there's the angst because of la- of teacher shortage and, and, and just educator shortage in general, it's not just teachers. And so, uh, I think that. That came out loud and clear in a lot of the conversations that these individuals had and they were able to talk about what we were doing here. And people were jealous. And that is uh happening, that, that is that. Information has come back to us several times in different ways. So that's good. And that, that was shared with staff. Um, teachers sharing that with other teachers, um specifically here and uh one of the elementary schools. Um, are there some things that are uh difficult and perhaps some uh, what I'd say constructive feedback? Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's difficult for uh some of the teachers in this school. They've been very patient and also. In areas of Jaffrey Grade School because we do have work going on, uh, getting to get set up. It can be very anxiety. Uh, building when you're not able to really set the room up the way you want to because. There's still ductwork being done within your classroom. And so I think that's probably a negative. I haven't heard a lot of, you know. Um, other than just disappointment, like angst. So that's, that's the information I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
By else with questions for Ruben? It's been a busy summer.
Has been a busy summer. Gonna be a busy fall too. Busy fall, cause uh we just had a parent session for, I mean, the high school, middle school did. The middle school had a parents uh information session for the upcoming field trip that. To Ferry Beach. And so I think there's gonna be another one tomorrow morning. And so that's different, that's new. And that was a teacher-generated um. Educational opportunity, which was good. And we were able to practice our model and find the resources to allow them to create what they needed, which was good.
Well, yeah, just a compliment to Sandy because it's starting to look like a really first-class high school, first-class elementary school. So. I mean, it's good. To me, it's, it's gonna be an enjoyable place to work, which I think is great for motivation. Not great. Uh, Ruben, do you have any kind of an update on this? I know that the. Um, middle, high school staff met with, some of them met with the architects or a group from the architects last week. Relating to the career in technical education, so.
Say, yeah, no really new information on that one, other than they met and we're just making some plans for when the architects are coming over here. And um I, I don't have the date on it now, but they'll be over here this month to be uh doing the, what we talked about last week.
Me- meaning September.
September, yeah, yeah. To talk to various groups and so forth about curriculum, curriculum expectations and. What they wanna see. And then, of course, at that point in time, uh, the individuals will, there'll be two different groups. So there'll be some who will be in the school trying to get the understanding, the vibe, the vision of what's happening so that that can be um translated into any new. Into any new architectural drawings. And then you have. The individuals who are gonna be working on, just looking at the outside, looking at the building, looking to see what's the feasibility. Uh, right now, I think we're all interested in the feasibility of drawings. So uh we. Know that there is some feasibility of work being able to be done at the Route two oh two site, like it's possible.
Okay.
Um. If we were to only do construction trades, the feasibility here might be that that could be done. Um, as well, to do more and to do more building unless you're renovating on the inside and changing and taking away from something else. Um, the first glance is this is a very tight. Tight piece of property. So, but people can get creative. There are some locations, there are some spots.
We know that. We, we had some discussion, in fact, you. Let us say, in, in that, that the. Notion of having a complete plan of funding needs for this margin doesn't seem to be realistic. But what we hope is that there's a. Well, first of all, to understand with the state that we can do it in this process and that there would be. Uh, if we are gonna do the new disciplines that we've talked about. Cosmopolitan, cosmetology and culinary artisan, that there would be a, a planning amount needed.
Yeah.
An amount for further architectural work and actually costing out the uh.
Yep, and we need to get in contact with the Department of Ed again and see if they're, if they have individuals who have a little more information than what they were able to provide last time.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay. That's another step that we need to take. Make sure that our timelines are right and that. We understand what the funding formulas and so forth are. We think we have it, but yeah.
There's always a lot to investigate and. And the, the district and US superintendent have a lot. That you're doing, but we know, so. Uh, okay, if there are no other questions for Ruben this time, then uh thank you, Ruben. And uh let's move on to the consent agenda. So I think we.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda answer.
Thank you, Lisa.
Well, second.
And Christine, thank you, Christine, for the second. Okay, there's no discussion. Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None. Okay, Nick, so you've got a. You know, you've got six zero on that. And uh action items. The Little Oriole Center Handbook.
So I'd like to take credit for the majority of this language, but I'm, I'm not because there's no way I wrote this in a short period of time. I did. I, I went to several different other, uh, several other. Early Learning Center Handbooks. I honestly didn't like a lot of them. Um, and so I went to probably the gold standard, which was, is the one over at Keene State. Because they're training people right then, right there. Now I had to, I reworded a fair amount. Kept the charts because they were fairly pristine. Um. Lot of good information philosophically. Actually, it also mimicked a little bit of what we wanted to do. So maybe we're not gonna be working with. Uh, college undergraduate learners in this way, but we're gonna be using high school learners so that we were able to do that, use some of that language. Um, we got rid of a lot of the language around uh state um certification or state uh. State certification, licensing. Uh, we, because we're a, a school, we don't have to go through that process. That being the case, we are still. Doing all of the state licensure uh requirements, um in case that's something we want to do. So. Adult student ratios with the specific ages, every one of our teachers, the one lead teacher and the two associate teachers. Um, which we, we all met together for the first time today, which was, which was a wonderful experience. Uh, we're gonna get along. It's gonna be fun. Um, they are all certified, uh, have all their CPR, have everything, and they're continuing their education as well, which is really great. And so uh our space certainly is, is more than adequate. Beautiful playground out there as well that will be accessible to the community once we get going here. And um so. Uh, we, you know, there's some of, some of that, uh, some of the language that didn't apply, we took, took out. There was uh about a third of the language that they had, we, we removed and then changed uh several of the other paragraphs to fit our needs. So if we were gonna go forward and um adopt this, it would be great to adopt it so that we could actually, you know. Uh, provide it out to parents on Wednesday. Uh, or even as early as tomorrow. There are a couple of things. I did get some feedback today. One of the, the lead teacher, um Lindsay. Uh, Lindsay Pelliciere, she indicated it would be good if we also attached the fee schedule to it. Just, they do have the feed schedule, but it's, the feed schedule's in a different location. So that's something that she suggests we add to it. And then I neglected to add that this, what I have to give, uh, I have to give. Um, some recognition or acknowledge that we used Keene State's document here. So I got adapted by. Needs to be put in there, um, or adapted from whatever the name of their um handbook is. So. I think they're the. CDC Development Center, Child Development Center over at Keene State College is what they are, so. Uh, and we took, you know, they have a, a little more robust of a curriculum in certain areas that we probably wouldn't. Um, subscribe to. So we took that area, that, that language out. Yeah. Yeah.
As we uh move forward in the hope of actually certify, like pushing people toward early childhood certification, having uh the. Specialized. Site certification, not just, okay, we're a school, we have that.
Yeah.
Um, is invaluable. Um, a lot of places won't, even won't bother ECE certifying a staff member unless they're, they're the center they're. Mentored in is certified.
Yeah, yeah. So I have a feeling we're, we're going to need to go down that route. The other pieces, uh, we're gonna be starting up pretty soon, uh, work on the grant that we got, the hundred sixty-five thousand dollar grant for early childhood. We've. You know, really been slow on getting it started for a lot of reasons, mainly because we've had so much to do. Uh, I'm gonna ask for extension a little bit. There is a, there is room for extension so that we, you know, basically just. Take our plan and move it like this. Um, still trying to, I have an applicant, we're gonna hire for the person to coordinate. The uh, the great, the work of the grant, and I'm meeting again with Menadok United Way tomorrow to talk about facilitation of meetings. Cause um, I'm gonna ask them to uh do a lot of the facilitations if they do this and. On a regular basis. Um. Something that. Is uh very evident as I've been um doing a little research, uh, been around talking with people, interviewing people. And, and certainly it's been in the news uh enough is that there's a uh incredible need for. Quality, high-quality daycare or childcare. Uh, high quality usually refers to, there's a curriculum, there's um, you know, trained staff. Uh, there, there's a lot involved with that, with that definition. Um. The need. Is much higher than what is out there for access. Um, and then, so, you know, we're helping that. I'd like to see us be able to work with our community to. Share some of our resources and our knowledge to be able to do much better for Ringe and Jaffrey. Um, that's part of the grant and to get uh outside organizations to partner with us in that way. Um, the other thing that is. Glaring through um these last two to three months of working and developing this center here. Is that um the pay for people who are working in those fields is um. Given. Given the last two to three years of inflation and everything is really. Uh, not appropriate, in my, in my opinion. And we can do a whole lot better as a um, a region. And as a society around here to uh. Treat and support. Our. Educators of our. Youngest, uh, most neediness, you know, the most needy of our learners, I guess you could say, uh, the ones who rely upon us the most. Uh, treat them in a way that is going to be uh more respectful. And so I, that will be fun for us to be part in that grant conversation to see what we can do to help. Um, maybe even change some policies and practice around the entire Cheshire County region. That would be fun.
How would that work?
It's, it's all politics, and so it's about getting people on board um who are interested in the conversation, it's about getting the individuals who are all the. Organizations that we would, we've identified twenty-four of them to um develop MOUs with them, memorable understandings, agreements with them, to be able to um work toward an effort. This is a community schools grant, community schools is a, there's a broad definition again with that, but uh. It really, community schools, when I first learned about what those were, I was maybe, you know, eight years ago, nine years ago, and it was. You would look toward like schools in maybe uh Chicago or inner city where um. You know, they would have doctors actually at the schools to work with so that parents didn't have to take their kids out of school and try to get them to doctor's appointments and so forth, that, that, there would be the resources, dental. Uh, resources, uh, emo- social emotional resources, uh, healthcare resources there for not just the kids, but for other people as well, but that we. It, it would be a resource to families is the idea, that's, that's. Um. How can we be a better resource as a school to our families? And specifically, certainly our entire community um benefits from. From strengthening our, our families, but. The families who have that high need where their kids are, you know, birth to five, birth to eight is the grant, but in that area. Um, there are a lot of needs, more and more people need childcare, more and more people are having to take time off of work to be able to get their kids to appointments and things like that. How can we take that stress away from them, provide, do it in a way that's cost-effective, uh, certainly? And uh, make sure that our schools are providing a greater service to our, our kids and our community. Uh, you know, that's, those are the conversations we have to have and then. You know, see what goes on from there. A lot of research, a lot of research on birth to five, the Rand Corporation had done some amazing work, like, again, eight years, ten years ago. And Impact Man, yeah, United Way started Impact Menadok, there was some. Oh, there was some good work that happened in the region and then, you know, it's, it's been slow.
Yeah.
And um, really, that's a shame.
So this grant was awarded last year, is that?
Yeah, we, we got it at the last school year, so like in the role.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and so your goal just generally in this is to facilitate a communication or uh.
Yeah, well, to at least set up the facilitation of it, I'm not gonna be the facilitator of it, but yeah, to um. Get groups of individuals who are uh from our community, from our teaching staff, from uh, from nonprofits in the region, whether it be Head Start or. Early, uh, you know, other. Other daycare providers in the area, uh, MAPS, uh. Counseling from over in Keene, so Keene has several nonprofits over there that we'd be bringing in, uh, you know, Reality Check, we have some partners already that we use for uh MTSSB work and. So it's just. Strengthening our partnerships. Talking about something that is um really important. Maybe narrowing our focus a little bit and seeing what we can accomplish.
The grant isn't specific to any sort of age group, right, within the school?
Birth to eight.
Birth to eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And birth to eight, there, there's a reason for that, it gets you around third grade. And so that goes back to our conversations about the state law about um assessing learners from. Kindergarten that I. It's pre K, yeah, kindergarten through um third grade for dyslexia and other reading challenges, so. Um. Couple, it really takes a couple bodies of research. One. Children are successful when they are able to read by third grade, that's one body of research. Then the other is the birth through five. And what takes place with that brain during those first five years of life? And how it develops and how that impacts. The rest of their life. And there's, you know. Subsets of information on toxic stress and, and so forth, if you go on to the um, there, there's, there's some really good information out there.
And what's the product that you? Would. Describe as your goal?
I think, you know, learning, we don't need to have a product for this grant, which is nice. Um. I think we certainly want something actionable. I would like as a product to have um some. Formalized partnerships with groups of individuals of like-minded who are committed to continuing to work beyond the grant. Potentially, if we were to come up with a project that we're, we are working on or that we believe in, that we can be a part of and help and strengthen our community, that we could put together. A project that we would be able to go for a federal grant. Um, not this year, but the following year. Um, cause with something federal, you can do a whole lot more because the dollar amounts are a lot higher.
Do you anticipate the colleges, Keene State and FPU?
Yeah, they're strong partners of ours and certainly, I mean, Keene State is very well-known throughout their region as, as being uh the center. Source for early childhood in the area. And FPU, I don't know if they have a major in that area, but certainly they're a strong partner for us in that. Um, pre, uh, pre K really, or kindergarten through third grade. Um, partnership that we have with them. Um, you know, we have seventy percent of their students in our schools. So um, on a regular basis.
Seven percent.
Seventy, yeah.
So. Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it was, I, I mean, I have the data, I think it was like. At least once, eighty percent of their education majors were in our schools last year. At some point in time. Fewer than that were consistently in our schools, but.
With all the other things going on, it's very exciting.
Yeah. Well, again, those are partnerships that. It strengthens them as well as it strengthens us, and that's what we're trying to accomplish through this for a select group of kids. Which, of course, impacts families.
Great, thank you for.
Yeah.
All that information.
Very vague right now because it's vague, but. We'll up, keep you updated as we move forward. And you might be invited.
All right. Very good. So uh. This is an action item, so you need. Our approval of this handbook, is that?
It would be helpful, certainly the, the practice is to have it for. A first read and then wait for a second read, and if that's what you'd like to do, that's perfectly fine. Um, if you have had the opportunity to do that and want to move forward and vote, I, I don't think you should vote on it if you haven't gone through it. Uh, at least skimmed it.
You said you didn't get to make a few changes to it anyways.
Well, not substantive changes, just acknowledgement. To where we got the information from and then add a document that I have elsewhere, that's just a. Financial chart.
And was there something you had to take out that wasn't pertinent to?
I've already done that. Yeah, this, this, that was, um, I went into the Keene State source and edited and removed and changed. Yeah. To fit our needs.
Yeah, I would have gone over it, I would love it, you can have a first reading.
Mm hmm, okay, yep. What I'll likely do is hand it out as a draft. Put draft on it so that they have an understanding of what, what we're gonna be operating from until it's officially.
Charlie, did you have something to say about it?
Yeah, I did, I'd rather cover it, cover.
Oh, oh. Did you have input?
Charlie, for making us all.
Well, I.
I rule, my conclusion was, in summary. It's beyond my area of expertise.
Yeah. I, I took a passing glance at it and I really appreciate the. Suggestions and the philosophy of being positive and, you know, saying things like. We walk in the classroom instead of saying, don't run. You know, that there's that level of. Philosophy in this manual I thought was. Very helpful, really setting a tone.
Yeah, we've, I would say that it has an expectation, a tone expectation, um. Also, an expectation of making sure that there's experiences. Uh, for instance, we, we removed out of that room the smartboard, we're not, we don't want digital. Um, with these children. Um, and we've also made some of policy adjustments or practice adjustments within our elementary schools as well, with our, you know, technology, we're not, kids aren't on tablets. They're not on Chromebooks, that's, that's not. Unless they're creating something, that's entirely different situation, but we're not doing, we're not doing passive screen time. Um, of any kind for young children whatsoever. So we certainly wouldn't do it for two, three and four-year-olds. The. Uh, so we have some great outdoor. Opportunities, we have some gardens, community gardens going in over there as well. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of really great things. The other thing here, I really, um, we wanted to make certain that we were able to put a section in there on nursing and um. So that parents who are able to, are able to come down, we'll make sure that we have a space for them to be able to do so, and that's important to be able to do that. Um. And so we have already today, we, we worked on where everything was gonna be, where those dividers were gonna be put and so forth, and so we're all set to move forward with that. And we'll be ready to roll on Wednesday.
Hmm.
When it all starts, it's really great.
Mike, what do you expect for this on Wednesday?
On Wednesday. Um, full-time, full-day, probably eight or nine. Um, I think that uh we'll end up around with, with twelve, I think, this year, which is um. Sixteen would be kind of where we, I think I'd like it, I think we'll hit that next year as we continue. Um, and we could cer- we certainly have capacity for more, there's, I mean, the space alone. Depending on ages, that's, that's where it really depends, I think, we certainly could have a whole two, three, four-year-olds, we could, we could have a lot. Um, and. If we. You utilize our students. That can help with, and even for licensing, that can help with ratios. But that's down the road. And I'd like to see what we do and what we learn here, be able to help, again, inform some things, some practices that are within our community. And maybe we do some professional development here that we can bring those individuals into our organization to help them out, to again. Uh, we have a lot of resources that a lot of places don't have, um, as I've been searching through. Several of these learning centers, you know, okay, we're very fortunate. So if, so I, what I'm hearing is probably, let's bring it back for a second reading, I'll, I'll stamp draft on it. And uh.
We'll pick it up better.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Good. Okay, very good. So now we have uh already addressed our policy review issues. So that brings us to board committee updates. Is there anybody who has uh, whose committee? Has met since then or scheduled something? Or has enough otherwise updated?
A week.
I know.
Shouldn't be too much.
I did attend a meeting about getting the school garden going at. Corner Middle High School, um. Very neat meeting, there was. Cornucopia was there as well as several administrators. And I, we ended the meeting with, you know, definite action plans and. Then. Tricia Layfield, Jeremy Baird and I walked around and sort of. Put in place the first steps that would happen. So. Start with some s-. Small plans for the fall and then in the spring increase that. Very positive. Do you guys eat fresh fruits and vegetables at your meetings? Yeah, we should. Sounds like you should. Yeah, I attended via Zoom, so. I got to eat all the fresh fruits and vegetables I wanted to.
And I understand the plans are to build a first raised bed.
Yes, in, in the fall, very soon, uh, so that garlic and fall onions can be planted. Uh. By the end of October, they should be in the ground. And then those are crops that can be harvested before the students leave at the end of this school year.
Okay. And do, do we know who's gonna build it?
Hmm. I believe um Cornucopia has given us extremely simple plans for a raised bed. Uh, Tricia was going to find the wood, source out the wood. Jaffrey Climate Initiative is going to raise. Money to build, um, to donate other beds out of Trex lumber. Which was nice when we talked about community building, you know, that was very nice, um. Participation on their level. So I, I believe that um. I'm honestly, this bed is so simple. It's not. Anything that we need to worry about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that, that update, eh?
I was just gonna say, I believe Heather has somebody that was going to build.
Yeah.
Um, build at least one or two of them, so. They were providing the drawings to Heather so she can get them to her partner. Who offered to do that for us, I guess.
Great, thank you, Sandra. Appreciate it. Hey, was there anybody else who received or scheduled a meeting or had any update? On their committee? Okay. And uh, as Charlie pointed out, it's only been a week since our last meeting, so it's, it seems appropriate that. You don't have to spend too much time on that. Facilities, we obviously see a lot coming along. Uh Sandra, since since you're here and we thank you for that, is there anything that you'd like to bring to our attention relating to the facilities?
Uh there's just a lot going on right now, um it is coming together as Ruben has stated, um. Just trying to keep up with it, to be honest with you, but I do see great things for us and. And I like what's happening with the painting and the flooring that we started and I look forward to continuing with that.
You're, you're really pleased you got it on screen yet, I know, right?
It's it's been, it's been a little bit of a struggle, but I've got a great support system, um thankfully, so it's really nice, it's it's a good place to be.
Are the air handlers working, providing?
How do you feel in here right now?
Great, freezing.
So yes, the answer is yes, we do have quite a bit of balancing left to do. That's gonna be a period of time, because right now we don't have the heat on. So there's gonna be, you know, we're trying to do some balancing right now, once the heat kicks in, there'll be another round of balancing, so. Until we get it figured out, there's gonna be tweaks off and on. Throughout the season and throughout the school year until we can find that sweet spot.
Hmm, okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and now we're on to uh public comments too. My second session, public comments.
Pausing back on the screen, um I think everybody, I don't think we have any people, so I'm not gonna super go through it. Um raise your hand whether you're in person or remote, first name, last name, color of the president, and public comment. Enter your own policy. Uh while we are waiting for people, um you know, something that can be interesting for the board, the community. Um of notes, um Ruben talked about branding, things like that, we talked about. You know, branding, partnerships, collaboration and so on, um one of the things that I did this summer, I wasn't. Super involved, but I was involved enough to just explain a little bit and then just show a deliverable. Um Heather Lindstad, Activities Director, is working with a group of learners to work on like school spirit, to work on um. You know, connectivity around like sports and other activities and things like that, so there 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 there's just a group of interested students working together. But um I'm specifically gonna start working with a few students on um. Some marketing pieces, and we don't know the specifics of like, is there gonna be an ELO involved or not? One of the deliverables um that we already have is that we've started um an Instagram page. This is kind of a new thing for us. Um typically, we like to keep things pretty connected. Um, you know, try to grow one follower base in one spot. Um, you know, we continue to grow um social media wise, we actually just hit two thousand followers on Facebook, which is pretty. Good for a district of our size, but at CMHS Sports, um this is a student. Run um Instagram page, obviously, it's monitored through the district, um. And meetings with the two learners that were involved last week. Um so obviously, this is something that was given to us just because we have the new um. Conan Oriole store with all the different branding and um stuff on like shirts and other items. But these graphics that you're seeing here um were created by one of those learners, they're gonna start um promoting some content on here. Um we had some uh different ideas that have floated around over the summer for different things that we can do. Um, so really excited um to have one of those things come through where we're actually working with learners, we're giving some empowerment there. Um. We'd originally talked about whether this was them just creating some content and bringing it to our social media or doing something new. But the idea with the student run piece was that the students were connecting with other students further kind of creating that school spirit. Around sports and other events, so while it is gonna be a very sports focused. Thing that we're gonna try out and hopefully we can continue to keep it kind of running. And maybe we can, you know, pull some of this imagery and other stuff um onto our. District page, um but I just think it's really exciting because we have all these nice new uh logos and things. And you can already see an example of like different ways that they're broken down, because we don't just have for the middle high school, the main logo. There's like five kind of different logos that we can have that kind of break it all the way down to just the Oriole head. Um, so hopefully there will be also some conversations and learning, we're gonna have a monthly check in. And hoping to just kind of talk about like the importance of certain branding, you know. The meeting last week was focused on like, hey, making sure that we're using the school colors and all these other things. Um that we've uh worked with to get. Um, the middle high school does even have their own fonts now. Uh we do have a little bit of a roadblock in using those and that I guess the fonts that were used are ones that we technically have to look at purchasing. So um the directive right now is just finding things that look very similar, but. Um just wanted to throw this out there and let people know that it is happening, um it is an Instagram specific page, uh we're not doing a Facebook. Counterpart. Um, and I think there's also like a little story just promoting another game, again, just the photo. Um they're gonna work on um. Pairing up with some of the late kids that are doing photography and things like that, so that they can bring some of those student photos from like the yearbook club into it. Um if we were working on like the uh. Various different components down at the field, you know, if we can get more electric down there and internet, we can start doing live streaming, not just. For basketball games in the Pratt, but for more games, there's talk about trying to do at least two home games per team. Every single time so that you're getting more of a, you know, diversity and a mix, so um. Just wanted to show an example of one of those things really starting to kind of come forward.
Right, thank you, Jim.
What's neat about this, if I can just interject, is this is very similar. This is an example, this is a great example of uh part of what. We talked about today in our opening sessions about uh collective leadership. And so the literature and the research out there on collective or or distributed leadership is really about. Squid professionals within the school environment and so forth. Um but the model can replicate itself all the way through the system, and so you have a situation here where. Juno and Heather are certainly authorities, right, they're they're positions of authority, they're they're in. Leadership roles, but what they're choosing to do with that is they are. Providing the resources and the expertise and the knowledge and the direction so that. The learners here can lead. And they can take the risks and they can learn and they can figure things out and they can build. Something far better than if we had just tried to do something ourselves with our, you know. Typical, the way we think, you know, you have one or two people thinking a certain way, this is how I do it, this is how it's gonna be, this is the product, you can guarantee what the product will be. Can't guarantee what the product will be here necessarily, but we can provide those resources and something great can take place, plus learning takes place, and so we're growing. Really neat. To see that happen. So clearly at the student level.
Right. So anyway, that was just a long way, I was trying to take up an opportunity for people to make a public comment, I haven't seen any hands raised, um. So.
No, nothing online.
Nothing in here? Yeah, so go follow the Instagram page, um. You'll see more stuff as we go on.
Okay. Alright, great, well. There certainly seems to be a danger here. Let's get out of the school before eight o'clock, I believe.
I make a motion.
Are there any board matters or future items that anyone needs to?
Before eight?
There is a board matter. Um depending, I'll just give you some information. And so the information is last time you asked me to come back with some ideas or some uh maybe some more specifics around. A quarter of a million dollars, what can be done, and how we can give it back to the taxpayers, but perhaps in a different way as opposed to. Twenty dollars on their tax bill, um you have. Gone through at least this, portions of this school, you saw the entryway, you saw the child. Um the little Oriole Center and you saw the painting and the flooring, not carpeting, but the flooring. And uh there has been painting done at JGS and flooring done there. The the we'll see a a noticeable difference in that school as a result, much more open, um calmer. Uh even just because of the sound dampening of everything, um it it looks. Very nice and professional as you walk down the hallways. Um, that money uh and Sandy has found some uh has been able to contact the. Organizations, the companies that have helped us with both of those. Uh pieces of work, the painting and the flooring, and has. Definitely um gotten quotes that would use that. Funding if it were provided to us. For instance, to do some flooring at RMS and then this tool right here, we could uh. Possibly spend uh two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty thousand just doing that. Um, and then painting alone, uh maybe about a hundred fifty thousand. So we. You know, we could do a mix and match of some of that as well, make sure that every school gets something in the mix, or we could just focus on one school or or, you know. See what the best plan is and um. But the point of the matter is, it's work that needs to be done to upkeep the existing. Buildings to make sure that we're um. Keeping it. As a or making it a lively place that's energetic for our kids and their learning and our staff is comfortable, um so. Uh I think that we might like to consider that. I again, love the idea about the feeding individuals, um but I would. Like to have a bigger conversation about that during budget season and how we can do something sustainably again, because I think this. Doesn't have to be a sustainable thing, this can just keep us moving forward, and it's something that can be done. And by June or, you know, before July, it can be done during the school year, it can be done during vacations, things of that nature. So not major construction, which of course would not work.
I understand that some of the carpeting at. For instance, RMS is like eighteen years old.
The carpeting in the classroom. Wow, wow, I wonder if we have any public comment about that, um, yeah, no, there are, there, yeah. No, the elementary classrooms and someone here, I mean, there's some similarities between some of the ones in here and then, yes, um. Uh are in need of. Being redone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, the next step is to approve a public hearing with the intention of. Seeing if the public wants to go ahead for a vote, I'm cool with that, that's, we've come, we've asked you to come up with something specific and. A specific need. Thinking about it.
Hi Charlie. Well, I was gonna say something eighteen years old. Uh should be preserved, you hear, historical, run that story.
Should be protected.
You know, I was thinking about this a little bit over this time, I. I I think would be. Useful to encourage the legislature and the governor in their action to. Do something about increasing the funding and say, yeah, we do need it. And there there is an argument that it would be better. To take it from this source where it's offered as revenue rather than using the unexpended. Fund balance.
Well, I guess, I guess the other point of that is that, you know, just, we're not even talking about everything, I mean, it could be so much more. But a hundred thirty seven thousand seven hundred for a painting and, you know, each. With all the schools combined, and then another two hundred sixty five thousand dollars worth of flooring, that's really only two schools, um. The ones that, I mean, JGS doesn't need as much flooring, because we've done a lot of it, although their classrooms still need to be redone in certain areas. That's, you know, over four hundred thousand dollars, and so not to say that you couldn't then on top of that use. Those funds, I'm just saying.
Right, right.
You know, it may be funds well worth. Well spent. They'd be appreciated by those who utilize them every day and they make the. Facilities look better for when people come in, and it's taking care of the facilities and making the facilities that we do have, which are older, lasts a little bit longer.
And it's something as you pointed out, we could do this year during the year instead of waiting to see what our. Balance looks like.
Yeah, I mean, you have a known right now, rather than waiting for a balance saying, oh, we have that, and then we have a month to cram it. This was a, this was a, we got a lot done, but it it was a, it was a very tough um end of the year and summer.
So could, could you just, if you remember, remind us what kind of what this process, somebody. Remind us what the process would be, I don't know, John, you kind of started down that road, but we would approve, um. But especially a public hearing. How much we vote with other two.
Have a town.
Have a town vote.
Right?
Right, um, they're pickball basically, and so we would schedule that, but we would schedule before that with public hearing. Receive input from the public on accepting this additional revenue.
Okay.
At that time, we would then decide to go forward with the public. Sorry, not the public, but the district wide voting or not.
Okay.
Like last time, we talked about a special meeting being held on October second. And. Then that. In order to have that, you'd have the public hearing about that on September eighteenth. And the reason why September eighteenth was chosen was because you would need to have at least seven days to advertise it. Before actually doing it. I still think. That would work.
Um.
Trying to think of everything, yeah, now.
I don't remember the bylaw, like how many days are needed for like the advertisement, things like that.
I think it's four, it's fourteen for a supervisor checklist, so we need.
Yeah, so we we would might have to. Push it to October second and then the one after that, whatever the.
It's gonna, even if we put it, even if we give it to the paper tomorrow.
Yeah.
They wouldn't go in until Thursday, so that would be. The fourteenth, it'd be two weeks, so.
Well, the 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 supervisor, the checklist piece is from the hearing.
From the hearing, yeah, you need two weeks, you need two weeks from the hearing to the, to the special meeting, yes.
From the hearing to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then if we. And then on the seventeenth, that would be, is the seventeenth or the?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth of September.
Right. And so October second would be a day too soon, or is that enough? Does that meet our fourteen days?
Looking it up.
Well, I believe it meets the fourteen, fourteen days after the public hearing, which is what.
But not after being in the paper. Is that?
No, 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 I mean, that. It could all go into the paper at one time.
Yeah, I think what I remember was that Carrie said we would advertise all of it. And then if you decided to not hold the second part, we could just cancel that instead of advertising one, then advertising the next one.
Okay.
I think that's how we did it. Last year as well, but I don't, I don't remember for sure.
Yeah, it is. Yes, it's enough time.
Yeah, we have enough time to get it.
The eighteen.
Have to have a hearing on the eighteenth. And then. After that, you'd have. It'll be fourteen days, right, yeah.
Okay, so in order to do that. We would need a motion.
And the motion would be to hold a special meeting on October second. For the purpose of. Uh.
Accepting.
Yeah, being able to utilize, so the unanticipated revenue, increase our appropriations. Up to two hundred fifty two thousand one hundred sixty six dollars is what the number is, so. The motion would be to hold a special meeting on October twenty, or on October second to increase. Our appropriations. To up to two hundred fifty two thousand one hundred sixty six, which is the addition in adequacy. And to have a public hearing two weeks prior to that on September eighteenth.
I would like to make that motion.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay. Thank you, Christine, I think that's an acceptable way of. Enunciating it, Lubin said it fairly clearly, I'm. I'm sure Juno's got the the word.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, Kim. And Kim seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Oh, she tried to get that before eight, it's still.
You got it, you got it, it was eight. Okay. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
It was awesome.
Okay.